It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this October twenty-fifth meeting of the city council to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Here.
Councilperson Thomas?
Here.
Councilman Nestor?
Present.
Councilman McGregor?
Here.
Mayor motion?
Present.
Mayor Five here, present. May I note a form?
I'd like to, at this time, make a motion to add another motion, F., under the section of mayor. This motion will be to appoint Ginnie Monahan to fill the position on the library board vacated by Mark Galper, ending on December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman McGregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Thomas to lead us in prayer.
Let me just bow and answer a moment of prayer. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to come to the council meeting for the business of the city, bind us all together in one accord that we do what is best for the city, granting us wisdom, knowledge, understanding in all things. In Jesus' name we pray and thank you. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, somebody needs to make a motion to approve the previous minutes if they had a chance to review them.
Mayor motion to approve the minutes for October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman McGregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment and on agenda items only.
Ernest Telegraphus, twenty-nine recs. On page two, who's going to be interacting with PennDOT for the traffic lights? Is that you, John Nestor, or is it the mayor?
It'll be council.
It'll be councils.
Oh, the whole council, okay. Now, I'm going to bring this up to your attention. We have many red lights. They're all different, from three point one seconds to four point eight seconds. That can make a big difference if somebody's going to tag you with a ticket. And I looked on the Internet. At thirty miles an hour, one second is forty-four feet. So, most of these intersections are around thirty to forty feet, okay? So, if you're short-changed one second, a couple writes you up for a red light. So, somebody got to bring it to their attention to put uniform, what do you call it, seconds on those changing the lights from yellow to red.
Okay.
That's my big concern.
Thank you. Does anybody have any correspondence that they'd like to bring forth? At this time, I'd like to ask this solicitor for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, in regard to that PennDOT agreement that's on the agenda, that's a master agreement. I believe it's for all of the traffic lights in town. Normally, PennDOT requires a new agreement every time they make adjustments, install new infrastructure for these lights. This is going to govern all of them. Essentially, it says what the law says, that PennDOT will install these lights, and the City of Manassas is responsible for ongoing maintenance of those lights. Also have an update with the EQ tank. The city engineer did take a look at it, had some minor comments. Those were sent back to the authorities engineer. It was just notating some easements for utilities that were not on the plans. Just as a reminder, you do need a planning commission meeting for that. I don't know if you have that scheduled or not for the planning commission to look at that subdivision. That's all I have.
Thank you. Our city treasurer gave us his report of our last meetings, and he's not present today. Does the city controller have any report?
No, I gave my report last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Time for my little discussion of some of the things that have taken place here at City Hall. Last Friday, we had a meeting with Senator Ward, Congressman DeVanzo, and quite a few of the PNG executives here in Manassas. And it was really to discuss the lack of communications that had been had between the city and the work being performed on Schoonmaker on behalf of PNG. Since that time, they've done considerably better. As an example, this week, they were planning on, and they have been working on, the Schoonmaker Phase One ADA ramps. That's the handicap ramps. They have on here that they've mill and paved Grand Boulevard where they worked there, and Hudson Street project, also mill and pave. On next week, they're planning on doing Schoonmaker Phase One. That's from Seventh Street to Fourth Street, I do believe, where they will be milling and paving the road there. So, they're making progress, and hopefully will get this behind us as quickly as possible. It's been repeatedly brought up to my attention that Evergreen Avenue running through the cemetery needs paving. Talked to the engineer. The estimate provided comes to sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. We can likely find funds from CDBG to accomplish this. If this is what everybody wants to do, there'll be hearings to talk about that, and we can probably get funds moved around to accomplish that early spring or summer of next year. There also may be some other sources that we can look at that the feds have some programs, too, that may or may not provide some funding for that. So, we've been in constant communications via net meetings with our DCTA. That's the Distressed Communities Technical Assistance. That's a HUD program where they assign two groups of people to work with us. One's called PFM, the other's LISC. The PFM is the financial consultant that's been providing economic forecasts to the city. That's their primary goal. To be real honest with you, it's not real rosy-looking. The forecast shows a deficient at the end of this year of minus one hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That's how much we're going to run shy this year. If nothing changes, now, anything can happen, but if nothing changes, that's what we're looking at. It's going to take every penny and every account that we got, that we have legal access to, just to survive this year. To be clear, it's going to be a rough, you know, after last year, we had a rough start. But, as, you know, everybody says, we had some good things come to us last year. We got reimbursed for some engineering fees from, by USDA. We had the payoff of the health center, and we had some money come in for some work that was done on Fourth Street and Reed. I'm very confident that we'll get through this year, although there's others that might disagree with me. But it's next year that really has me scared. To be honest, we got to change something in this city, or it's going to be a problem. We just can't do that. Which brings us to the fire department. This year's budget included a twenty thousand dollar each to the two fire stations we have. Already, we've distributed five thousand dollars each of this money. We'll do our best to fulfill this commitment, and we still have two more months to find the money and make good on it. We're working hard at it, and we'll continue working hard at it. The city administrator and I made a trip to Greensburg's office of Senator Ward, and we met with Senator Ward, her staff, and DeVanzo was there at the same time. The purpose of the trip was really to promote a concept whereby the state would help us finance a three-point-four million dollar loan for the express purpose of fully funding our MMO. If we fully funded our MMO, we wouldn't have to make the four hundred thousand dollar payments that we're having to make every year right now. If we were to fully fund it at a reasonable interest rate over a twenty-year period, it would yield a payment of about two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, or less, depending on the interest rate. What we receive from the state every year is about that same amount. In other words, the city, the state does provide us some state aid. So, what that would really do is it would save us over four million dollars over the next twenty years and help us get through the next few years barring no other radical inflation transit, drive cost up. Those are some of the things that we've been working on since the last council meeting. At this time... Just a little discussion, no motion here, but just a little discussion. There's a couple of grant applications that the city administrator and I have worked on that we'll be submitting for grant opportunities to promote different things we have going on in the city. As if and when those things become reality, we'll bring them forth to the city council for approval before we act on any of them. Sewer projects, road projects, tennis courts, all... There's all different kinds of projects. Would somebody like to read the rest of the motions I have here?
We'd like to make a motion to add speed signs placed on Spring Street to curb speeding, with additional children at play related safety signs to contain to alert drivers on Spring Street to lessen their speed.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? I would like, kind of like to point out, I was just informed a few minutes ago that they already have the speed limit signs placed there. So, the streets department has proactively done that. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman McGregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to offer a position to Clinton Sholly within the Streets and Parks Department of the City of Manassas at a starting salary of twenty-one dollars per hour pending passage of pre-employment screening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes. There are quite a few. Mr. Sholly, where's he from? I'm just curious.
He lives in Manassas.
He lives in Manassas. What's his address?
I have it right here. He lives on twenty-three, twenty-one Art Street, Manassas.
Okay. I was reached out today by some individuals, actually, there was two of them, that applied for the position also, and they said that they were actually scheduled to be interviewed next week. Is there any truth to that story?
The seven that we have, the joint, all them gave us, these were the list of the names that we got.
Did we interview all these people?
Yes, we did.
So, these people?
They each got a half hour.
They weren't interviewed, okay.
These are names that were handed to us.
Could I see those names?
Yes.
So, they were all interviewed?
Yes.
Yes.
All seven.
Actually, there's somebody...
We even moved it around to accommodate someone who wasn't able to come at an earlier time.
I would like to have seen a resume or something on this Mr. Sholly instead of just his name. I don't know where he's from.
There should be in the package.
Well, I would like to have seen it before the meeting.
Yep. He interviewed last time. You were at the last, weren't you at last time's meeting?
No.
Because I thought you were there in the beginning and had to leave.
No, I missed him.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'd like to see a resume.
Okay.
I still have my kit.
I want to vote on someone I'd...
I still have my kit.
No, just the one that we're going to hire.
Okay. Resume and application we have.
Here it is.
I still, that's the only thing I have, the resume.
I would like to point out that of the seven people that we interviewed on Monday?
Yes.
They were very strong, every one of them.
Just like last time.
I would not be hesitant to have any one of the seven work for us. They all showed a strong commitment to the city. They all showed very strong work ethic. They all showed the ability to work with others. I think we were quite lucky to see the seven people that we did have. We basically decided that he was just the cream of the crop, and that's where it came down to.
And the same thing occurred last time. All the applicants were excellent applicants. To have that quality of people interview for those positions, we were blessed. The one that we're putting up here today, he was one of the two that were in the running last time. He was second to the last one that was chose last time. So, and even, and the thing was, and then the thing was, too, he was so interested in position, every month, he came and checked and seeing if we were hiring again soon. That's how committed he was to work into the City of Manassas. But all of the applicants were excellent. You know, we couldn't have gone wrong with any of them.
What is the application for, which job?
It's for the, it's for the Public Works Department.
For the Public?
Works Department.
That's the streets?
It's the whole thing, Public Works, the Streets and Parks included.
Anything else?
No. I'm just not real comfortable with this.
Call the roll.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman McGregor?
No.
Mayor motion?
Yes. Can you read the motion we added?
Oh, yeah.
Motion to appoint Ginnie Monahan to fill the position on the library board vacated by Mark Galper, ending on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman McGregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmen to give us his report on the council finances.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-one cents. All invoices are attached as attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman McGregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the rec account in the amount of one hundred and ninety dollars and thirteen cents. All invoices are attached to Agenda's attachment to B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman McGregor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Fund in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. All invoices are attached as attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman McGregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoice from the Refuge Account in the amount of forty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars, twenty-four cents. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's, Agenda is attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman McGregor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Aye.
Motion to pay the following invoice from the Liquid Fuels Account in the amount of six thousand, one hundred and six dollars and seventy-one cents. All invoices are attached to the Agenda's attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman McGregor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Line Usage Fund in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and ten cents. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's attachment F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman McGregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to transfer sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents from the general account to the payroll account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman McGregor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and three cents to the employee healthcare account for the amount of October two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman McGregor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Following balances are in the accounts as of today. ARP Fund, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and two cents. Grant Fund, fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Line Usage is eight hundred thousand, six hundred and one dollar, seventy-four cents. Rec Board has four thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and ninety cents. Debt Service has one million ninety, one million ninety thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven, eighty-seven. Liquid Fuels has one hundred and forty-four thousand, three twenty-six, fifty-seven. Refuge, sixty-eight thousand, eight, eight hundred and seventy dollars and ninety cents. Fire Escrow, twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-four cents. Healthcare has four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Parks is forty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Payroll has four thousand, twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents, and the general fund has four hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and thirty cents. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Thomas?
Good evening, everyone. Our Streets Department for September two thousand and twenty-three. Got garbage twice a week downtown, cold patched several streets, repaired three catch basins and cleaned out several more, reported undermining at the intersection of Ninth and Knox. Marked thirty-six PA-1 calls, cut city lots, put up signs throughout the city, boarded up abandoned buildings, and helped the Parks Department as needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, Councilman Nestor, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, members of council, administrative staff, rail office, and citizens of Manassas, here's the following reports for the code office and public safety for September two thousand and twenty-three. The Manassas Municipal Fire Chief report is the following: vehicle accidents, four; structure fires, one; medical assistance, two; automatic fire alarms, seven; dryer fire, one; landing zone, three; public service, one; calls outside of the city; training drill, Carroll Township, one; structure fire, Shawlory, one; structure fire, Washington, one; total calls, twenty-two; total firefighters, two hundred and twenty-two; firefighters per call, ten point zero; total man hours, two hundred and fifty-three. Firefighters have also installed ten smoke detectors so far. If you are interested, the number to call is seven two four, six eight four, seven eight three three. Please leave a message. Firefighters put in a few, put in a full week of fire prevention in the schools from October eighth to October fourteenth. Firefighters did five annual fire drills and walkthroughs in the month so far. The following is the code activity report for September two thousand and twenty-three. Habitation permits, twelve. Correction letters, twenty-one. Animal complaints, nine. Total of six raccoons, two dogs, one rat. Miscellaneous complaints, fourteen. Health inspection, two. Office meetings with residents, five. Citations issued, four. Hearings, one. Building permits, eleven. zoning permits, three. The miscellaneous complaints mainly were from grass, noise, abandoned vehicles, and homes. Police Department receipts for the month of October two thousand and twenty-three. Miscellaneous collections of copies of police accident reports, one hundred and sixty-five, for a total of one hundred and sixty-five. Court receipts for the district's justice office is the following: vehicle code fines collected, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Crime code fines collected, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. City ordinance collected, eighteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Code enforcement collected, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty cents, for total receipts of one thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and ninety-eight cents. Total receipts collected for September two thousand and twenty-three is one thousand, eight hundred, seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Citations for September two thousand and twenty-three from the police department is a hundred and six for a year total, nine hundred and nine. The following report for the Mon Valley Emergency Medical Service. Emergency calls, one hundred and forty-three. Fire standbys, eight. Police standbys, one. Refers, nine. Total incidents, one hundred and sixty-one. Average hours, seven point sixty-seven response time. Also, I've been working with Chief Uhos with getting the police department at night, whoever is patrolling, to start collecting a list of the phone poles that we have within the City of Manassas and the burnt lights. We had a list that was sent to me today that went ahead and moved over to Mr. Lombardo from the West Penn Power. He's doing an investigation. It is premature to say, but there might be some defects are out there, which is why we have so many lights that are burnt out within the City of Manassas. So, I would like to thank the police department for going out and patrolling at night and writing down those pool numbers. So, please expect to see the police department within the next month or so, writing down and tagging the pools. Also, I got a message from one of the employees at the Manassas Elementary Center. I'll go ahead and pass the phone over if anybody wants to take a look. While Councilwoman Thomas is looking at that photo, and it's making its ways through council, so far, the trash has not been picked up this month, and it's piling up. I will go ahead and contact the school district and see if it's been picked up tonight, but that's been since Monday. And I remind you, this is where the kids are also playing nearby, and this was sent to me tonight. And there's going to be more trash from the custodians are cleaning till eleven o'clock tonight. So, there's going to be more added to that photo.
What is the photo?
Would you like to see the photo?
It's just a picture of some very overloaded dumpsters. It's a picture of some very overloaded dumpsters of trash.
Where are located?
It's actually located at the Manassas Elementary Center at the ramp where it's actually shared by delivery truck drivers, and the children actually go and use that area as rec.
Does it belong to the school?
It's a contract from the Mon Valley Refuge Authority.
Well, it's county halling.
So, it's county hauling that owns those.
Who's responsible, the school?
Shouldn't be a school district that owns a contract with the hallway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They own separate contracts.
They would.
And it's supposed to be picked up three times a week.
Is that the school that has this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I think you should take it up with the school.
And I will go bring it up again, but I think as a public safety matter with rubbish like this...
County hauling needs to take care of.
Needs to be notified, and I thought council should be notified as well, too.
Thank you.
Other than that, Mayor, I'll make light note to thank Jordan Pop for the cough drops. I haven't coughed today. So, other than that, I yield the floor, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McGregor, do you have a report for us?
I do. Parks Department report for September two thousand and twenty-three. Cut all the city parks, cut all the ballfields, prepared for the events. Picked up litter and got garbage in the parks. Helped the street department as needed. That concludes that report. I do have a couple of questions, though, about the Evergreen situation.
Okay.
I, you said about using CDBG money on that. There's no addresses on that street. Are we permitted to do that, Mr. Solicitor?
You're going to have to check with Mr. Haglin, but that is a very legitimate question.
Well...
Doesn't service any residences.
Yeah, that's my question on that.
I did contact Walt Haglin, and it is not an eligible street for CDBG funds.
Hmm. Okay, we'll seek other sources.
Also, too, you said you had talked to our engineer, and you'd given us a quote for, what was that again? That amount?
Sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Okay.
More or less.
I have a proposal here from El Grande Industries for... I have a proposal here from El Grande Industries for twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay, that sounds a lot better than our engineering estimate.
Yeah. Have you seen this, Mayor?
No.
Would you like to read it?
No, sounds good to me. Okay. Thank you. Should make it a lot easier.
The only problem is, I don't think you're, unless you get a grant, you're not going to be able to fix that road. I understand what WEC is saying about it and why it would cost that amount. It's because they would do a lot more work on it than what was proposed in that particular estimate right there. That's, road has been a wreck. I've worked at Grandview Cemetery since nineteen eighty-three. It was in terrible condition back then and it's done nothing but degrade. We need to find funds to fix that. I had hoped to use the ARP money. We had thirty thousand dollars that had been earmarked for the tennis courts. However, it's been brought to my attention, mostly by the mayor, and rightly so, that we're going to need every penny in that account just to make payroll to the end of the year. So we do have an issue there. And as far as the money for the, the fire departments, I hope we find it because they were depending on it. Were needed repairs and equipment to purchase. Money doesn't grow on trees for us or the city and either one, so I hope we do find it. But you need to really look into that particular estimate.
Thank you.
I'm done.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on items related to the business, responsibility, statutes, codes and ordinances of the city of Manassas.
I don't know what you said just now, but I, I have a question that is in reference to last, two weeks ago, the meeting we had. And I think that I, I should, I should be able to ask this question.
Is this related to?
Relate.
Business, responsibility, statutes or code and ordinances?
I know that you'd like to shut us down, but my question is real simple.
No, I don't want to, please ask it, but don't expect to get through it if you're not related to something we can have control over.
Well, there's two questions that I have and I'm gonna name them. The first one is the viaduct. What are you guys gonna do with the viaduct? There's a hole bigger than shit there, okay? And if that hole, if that bridge caves in, okay? Whose responsibility is? Because it's gonna divide Reed Avenue with the upper city to the lower city. But I know you guys don't care about the, the low-income people, which is on the high end. I do. The second question that I have, whether it's in reference to what you said, I'd like to reply to Mrs. Thomas, what she said last week, that God told her to run for office. But I differ with you because I see you signs up and people like me voted for you. Not God. Okay, but God picked you up and took you to the courthouse, as you recall.
What does this have to do?
And five judges voted on you coming in.
This is getting into politics and has nothing to do with the City Council.
Because I gave them.
No, this is politics and that's not to be discussed.
I gave them my time last month.
I'm sorry that this is politics, we just don't need to go there.
Thank you.
Well, I ain't going there.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Yeah, I did. Okay, what are you gonna do about the streets in Manassas? Forget about the, you know, the sewage plant and that's all you talk about.
Okay.
Well, what are you gonna do about the streets? Like Pirani Boulevard? Like Grand Boulevard? Like Rostraver? Do you have an interest in fixing Manassas?
Did you, did you understand the part that we have no money? The fact that we're gonna be short a hundred and ninety thousand dollars at the end of this year?
I do understand, but do you understand?
Yes, I understand that.
Do you understand?
And we will try to get some money through various grants.
That you haven't, you've been saying that for two years, you haven't got a kind of done.
Well, you're, you're exactly right because I'm not getting much support.
Why?
I'm like.
Why? I mean, you have five people.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, you have five people in your, like, the Mia Maya group that you met. What'd you guys come up with, five people?
We're getting off subject here. You can talk about roads, but you can't talk about that.
Well, give me an answer on this. I believe that the redevelopment authority, okay?
And that's a different authority? We have no control over the redevelopment authority?
It, it's not politics. This is what, it does take parts in as far as we do, okay? You guys are, to me, between you guys and the redevelopment, the Dirty Twelve, okay? You guys are the Dirty Twelve because I know the imbroglio is gonna get.
We don't need any derogatory reporting, Mark.
Imbroglio is gonna get that, that ground there.
No, I think you're finished.
Pardon?
I think you're finished. You can stay on subject, you can talk about things that we can have control.
Imbroglio is gonna get that ground to where you guys are gonna put that Mickey Mouse outfit there. And you know that as well as I do. And you ain't done a damn thing for the parking lot. So you could sit there and tell me that you trying to keep us from speaking? Let me tell you something. The Dirty Dozen, I just told you who they are. And you are the Dirty Dozen.
That's fine. Anything else?
And you're a big part of it.
Chief Dog.
Well, I tell you what, I'm gonna do my damn best to get you damn out of office.
Okay, that's fine, but that's political and doesn't even need to be discussed here.
Yeah, I'll discuss it here if I have to. Payback, did you let some asshole talk to you?
Hey, let's clean up the language, let's clean up the language. Sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down.
Do we have anybody else, Mayor, to?
Can I ask you a question? I think the police chief is more than adequate to be present. Why do we have?
He's sick.
He's sick?
He's sick.
Okay, so this is just temporary?
It's temporary.
Okay. I, I thought maybe we were adding more expense. Number two. What are you people gonna do when you said you're short a hundred thousand dollars? And if you can't get any grant money? What's Plan B?
We don't pay bills.
You won't pay bills?
If you don't have money, you don't pay bills.
Do you know which bills you're gonna not pay?
It'd be up to council to decide.
Tony, do you have any idea? One or two, that's all. I just wanna know what.
It's up to council, we need to wait till we reach that point and then we'll make that decision.
Well, that's like waiting for the water to be under the bridge. It's too late.
No, it's not too late, it's time to do it at that time.
You don't have a Plan B then?
There are several things that could happen, but we don't know.
I have one more question. Can you tell me, between now and New Year's, what is your plan to bring somebody here to help us rejuvenate the city? Do you have anything going? We're just gonna do Halloween, Thanksgiving, Christmas and we're just gonna have these events, but no?
I have no firm commitments by anybody.
So between now and New Year's, we've got nothing in the.
There's no firm commitments by anybody.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything?
Any motion to adjourn, Dan?
Actually, I have one question for Tony and I should have asked this earlier. We're looking into Liquid Fuels transfer. Okay, did you come up with a total on that yet?
So if, here's some numbers. The balances of today is four hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-three cents. If you do a subtract of the payroll for the rest of the year, payroll is around two hundred and seventy thousand dollars and that's barring any surprises, okay? That gives you a balance of, that gives us a balance of a hundred and forty-two thousand, six seventy-eight, forty-three. And I'm getting to your question, Don. Give me a second.
Very patient.
Thank you. Okay. The city bills, which average are a little bit over fifty thousand every two weeks, round that off to a hundred thousand dollars, that will leave us with roughly a balance of forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-three cents. Now, the big thing in the room is the MMO. We still owe two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Take the forty-two thousand, six seventy-eight off and get onto the two twelve, that takes us down to a negative one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars, fifty-seven cents. To answer your question, Don, there's a possible transfer. We're looking, looking into, seeing the West Penn Funds, what came out of the General Fund that were, should've came out of the Liquid Fuels. And we have, I have to leave a cushion in there because winter's coming. I'm gonna have some money in there for salt and things of that nature. So what I'm looking, I think I reported to you tonight, the Liquid Fuels has a hundred and forty-four thousand. I'm looking around seventy to seventy-five thousand that can get transferred from Liquid Fuels to the General Account. That will take us down to ninety-nine, will take us down to ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-one, fifty-seven as a negative balance. Now, what would be really great, that I could really close this gap real fast, within thirty thousand dollars, is if we sold the building next, next door. Well, that's hopefully why you advertise it for a buyer. But if we got at the minimum sixty thousand, okay? We would be able to. I'm sorry? The city owns it. The city still owns it, that's the old city building. No, right next door here.
Yeah, hundred.
So that would leave Don roughly a thirty-nine thousand dollar short. We can make that up. I can make it up somewhere. So, and yes, to, and to answer your question, I'll tell you this publicly. As far as the fire department, I budgeted it, made a commitment. If I have to, I'll take it out of the ARP money. But they will get their money. They not, may not get it till December thirty-first, but they'll get it.
I'm sure they'll be very grateful to hear that.
Well, a promise is a promise. Okay? So my main concern right now is pulling seventy or eighty thousand dollars from out of somewhere.
A question, you're saying, you're talking about leaving a cushion and I understand the concept. Do we have to have that money spent by December thirty-first?
No.
In the Liquid Fuels?
I do not believe so.
You may want to look into that, just to make sure.
If we do, we're gonna have a big salt order.
Very good.
But again, I, I'm, we have a tendency sometimes in this city to come up with things that we didn't know existed and all of a sudden we got a bill for it. So do I expect to make a cushion in the line of the Liquid Fuels? No. If I have to take it down, I'll take it all the way down appropriately. So, but I'm not quite sure where that's gonna sit right now for another month.
Okay, thank you.
Hope that answered your question.
It does.
Okay.
Tony, I, I got one question. Last meeting, you said we have three hundred and forty tons of salt, so why do we need money for salt?
I never said a word about salt.
Somebody did.
I never said a word about salt.
May, may I?
Please.
We were told that there's about three hundred and fifty tons of salt.
Yeah.
One heavy snowfall?
It's gone.
It's gone.
The whole thing is gone, one.
How many miles is the city of Manassas route, Rodney?
Fifty-seven?
Twenty-six. Three hundred and fifty ton over twenty-six miles of road.
Yeah, but some of that is Penn Dott, ain't it?
Some of it's not. Lot of it's not.
That's why we get Liquid Fuel.
Yeah, that's what Liquid Fuels is for. These guys take care of downtown, Penn Dott now. Now, they take care of all that, they come up Tyrell. Yeah, so, you know, three hundred and fifty ton, one heavy snowfall, Rodney.
We've done it a lot.
Yeah. How many, how many tons do we go through a year? Do you guys have an idea?
I did three fillings last, I, last year was a miracle, it was really, really light.
Light.
I left out one question.
Wait, we're still speaking about this for one second, Pino.
Okay.
I would say, what's the whole thing, Rodney, hold? Five hundred?
About four, about four.
Four hundred, and I think we filled it twice last year. We were lucky last year.
But we weren't all the way empty.
Yeah, so.
What happened to that allotment, Tony? I always, I always was under the assumption that you had to take what you were allotted for, what happened to the, I don't know what the allotment is now, is it twelve hundred a year? What is it, Tony?
We're contracted for that amount at like probably sometime next month, but that's a good question. I mean, we didn't tell them, no, we don't want it.
It used to be years ago, Rose, I mean, we had stockpile somewhere or this and that. Now I was just curious about that, if it was, if it was a bizarre thing for a while.
It really was, well, that's a good point, I will.
We used to get sixteen hundred and then it dropped to five hundred twelve. And we had a, by like July, we had to put our order in.